Good afternoon. Welcome to the June 8, 2017, meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by some TV digital media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner has requested withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the planning board has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full ranges of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use district requests, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final action, be it the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations to go to those boards for their consideration. If you're addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please make sure to give us your name, address, and zip code. First order of business, approval of the minutes of the May 11, 22, and 25 meetings. Any additions or corrections for those minutes, sir? Motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Bryan.
Second.
Second, Mr. Younger. In discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now calling Gary Roberts, Director of Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the first item on the consent agenda is B2. This is case W.3327. It's located in between Peters Creek Parkway and Fourth Street, 1.74 acres. This case has been withdrawn automatically. We received an automatic withdrawal request prior to Monday at 5:00 p.m. the deadline, so again, it has been withdrawn automatically. Next item is B3. It's proposed rezoning on Cloverleaf Drive, located off of Stratford Road in industrial areas, zone GI. Current property is little over five acres in size, shown there in yellow. Two fairly large industrial warehouse-type buildings that are located on the property currently. One of them is used for Hughes Plumbing Supply right in this position here. The proposed rezoning is from GI to GBL, General Business Special Use Limited. These two districts, they do have some similarity. The GB district does allow for some manufacturing use. This site is located off of Stratford Road. It's not visible from Stratford Road. We don't see this as a destination retail site, but it would allow for some more flexibility for this use. This building is currently not officially used, and so we're in support of the proposed rezoning. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Back to you here. No one has... You're recommending approval, am I?
That's correct. Staff recommends approval.
No one signed up to speak. Has anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Saying none, declare the public hearing closed. This wishes the board.
I move approval on this.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Younger, and second, Mr. Leakey, in discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is C1. This is a multifamily subdivision located off of Stone Bridge Drive. It's actually Stone Bridge Phase 2. Site's 1.7 acres in size. It's currently got a small swimming pool and tennis courts located on it, and it's zoned RM8, residential multifamily, up to eight units per acre. And this is a site plan showing the subject property with the buildings here. It's a five-unit row of townhomes, parking in the rear. Because these buildings will have their back essentially facing Stone Bridge Drive, planning staff did encourage them to provide some additional screening along this street frontage, and since your site... Since your agenda book was received, the developer submitted this plan, which you're looking at now, that shows some cypress trees that will be located in between the existing white pines. There's actually a pretty healthy row of existing white pines there, and also a wooden fence will be installed here. Some additional screening to kind of screen the backs of these units along Stone Bridge. And these are the building elevations, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements, and staff recommends approval.
Motion, the board.
Could I have a question?
Sure.
This area is taking tennis courts and putting condos there. Was there anything in the original site plan that promised a certain amount of open space that this would cause an issue? Do you know anything in the original site plan that talked about open space?
We certainly looked into this, and this is extra open space, so they can afford to lose this and still meet allowance requirements.
They'd have plenty of space, in other words, so this will not be a loss in the overall...
It was actually, I believe, planted in 1969. It's a very older development, Stone Bridge.
And there weren't any... There weren't any encumbrances on it or anything to have that kind of...
Not for this property, no.
Okay.
Yeah. I move approval. Okay. Motion, Mr. Bryan.
Second.
Second, Mr. Younger. In discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on your agenda is public hearing, or the review of W.3322. I'm sure you all remember this case. It came up before you earlier in the year for the proposed CI district. It was recommended for approval. That went to City Council, and at their April 3 meeting, they remanded it back to the planning board, and at that time, it converted to the requested district being CI to CIL. It's currently zoned PB and PBS. You reviewed it at your May 11 meeting and voted to continue it, to allow for some more dialogue between the residents and the property owners. That has taken place. They had a neighborhood meeting on May 25. You received a summary of that earlier this week, an email summary, and just today, we did get some additional correspondence from the property owner that you have in front of you. During that time, the developer has agreed to an additional condition, A, under priority issuance of building permits that you see, that I've got underlined there, and that's in regard to building height. That a 60-foot building would be the tallest structure that could be built. The only other requirement is under other requirements, and that deals with parking. That parking will be comparable to what would be expected in the PB district. Any new structure, building that takes place, has to meet PB parking requirements. So that was a condition that came out of your May meeting, or was presented at your May meeting, excuse me, and this building height condition is the only new condition. And planning staff recommends approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions with staff? We did have a public hearing. We closed the public hearing, I believe, and then after we got into work session, we agreed for a continuance for a month, just to allow this meeting to take place. So with the board's approval, I'm thinking we'd five minutes of each side today, just to get an update on the meeting. So we will start with the proponents. Luke Dickie.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Luke Dickie with Stimmel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101. Thank you for the opportunity to get in front of you and kind of give you an update on the neighborhood meeting that we did have. That was held on Thursday, May the 25th. It was at the Guller... The Gallery Lofts itself, meeting with the residents. We had a total of 16 residents out of the 82 total units show up for a good discussion that lasted from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. Lots of questions were asked, and I believe we got a report for you and those questions with the answers that were provided in front of you. Basically, the overall intent of that was to discuss what the sketch plans were to be done on the site, which was for a four-story building, 45 approximate units, one-bedroom units, maybe two units of bedroom units in the future, depending on how it's looked at with parking underneath, and also additional amenities for a saltwater pool, grilling area, so that was what was shared with the residents. So we had a good opportunity to discuss that with them, and I came away with an understanding of what the project was. Kind of reiterate from last meeting, we did meet with Arts Base School. They're in support of the project as well, as well as Michael Suggs with the Guller Community Development. He is also supportive of what the plans were at that time. As you can see, we've added this new condition for building heights, which came out of that meeting with the residents. So it's 60-foot limitations, just right in line with what pedestrian business zoning is. Also, we got that limited uses for what we're presenting today, and the condition for the parking. We also have Porter Jones is here with the development group. If you have any questions of him, he'd be able to answer that. I do believe that we have some of the residents have actually signed up as proponents, so I'd like to go ahead and yield the rest of my time for them to have some of their discussions. So if I have to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, did you want to speak? Okay, then Chris Woolard.
My name is Chris Woolard. I live at 181 East Sixth Street, apartment 414, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Thank you for the ability to speak before you once again. I want to start by thanking you for granting the continuance last time. That allowed Stimmel a chance to convince our property owners to have a meeting with us. I also want to apologize, because that's not really your job, is it? You know, what we were seeking here was a little bit of transparency, and that was really the responsibility of the property owner. That was their failing. However, I want to thank you for making that right, even though that was not your task. My goal here today is pretty straightforward. I want to be here to make sure that the three stipulations that have already been agreed to go forward with the zoning, the building height, the parking, and also the restriction of use based on what's allowable under CI. I'd also very much like to implore you today to consider a couple of other things that have to do with construction in the future and why this rezoning is happening. The site that's being rezoned includes 65 of our 105 parking spots. That's 60% of our building's parking. That's immense. We have a verbal agreement from the property owner that they will provide 65 parking spots off-site for us for the duration of construction. We would like more than a verbal agreement. We would like that made a binding stipulation. Second, the block of Chestnut Street between Fifth and Sixth is currently closed due to construction of parking deck in the Link apartment complex. We were told by the construction site superintendent that that street closure is permanent for the duration of construction, which is 36 months, three years. We were given 24 notice... 24 hours' notice of that street closure. We want to make sure that doesn't happen again. Given that, and also the Arts Base Schools' concerns about safety and also traffic flow along Seventh, we would also like you to consider adding some sort of stipulation, saying that if street closures need to happen, they cannot be long-term, and if they are short-term, those street closures are... We get plenty of warning, written and verbal, and then also that the Arts Base School especially gets warning, so that they can prepare for this. Lastly, I'd just like to, once again, sort of reiterate this thing about community meetings. Feel that everybody has a right to be involved in these meetings, not just property owners. I think that's a good lesson to be learned from what happened here. What we were looking for was a little bit of transparency, a little bit of communication, a little bit of honesty. I'm starting to see that now, and I'm happy about that, but I'd like to continue seeing. We're happy to allow this to move forward, assuming that our stipulations are agreed to. You know, we're looking forward to working with the property owner, with the developer on this project, not against them. We'd like to continue in this new era of openness, as it were. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah. I didn't quite get... What street is being closed down?
Chestnut, right now, is closed between Fifth and Sixth Street.
Between Fifth and Sixth. Okay.
Also, the section of Fifth Street between Chestnut and Patterson is being closed at random, as is Patterson between Fifth and Fourth Street. Now, that gives us a little bit of pause for what future construction might do to our neighborhood in terms of street closures.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. I believe we used all the time. Okay. We'll now turn to the opponents. Will Knott.
Yeah. My name is Will Knott. My address is 424 Springdale Avenue, Winston-Salem, 27104. My grandkids, who I am... I'm sorry, chair. My grandkids attend the Arts Base School. We deal with the parking every day, both during pickup and drop-off. And I say parking, as much as anything, I think it's the congestion, especially Seventh I've handed out to y'all an aerial photograph that's similar to the one that has all the zoning areas marked on it to help orient you. Turn mine around, right side. Arts Base School is right here. This is their parking lot. This is their upper school. The traffic flow for the arts school, when in the morning, people come in along here, and they come along here, they go up north to Chestnut, go through here, drop off kids. There's a queue that comes through. You drop off so many, then everybody moves forward. And then again, there's people dropping off down here. I'm off... Thank you. In the afternoon, it's the same pattern, except that it's one-time flow for this school, the lower school, which is 2:30, and then the upper school, they come through and pick up at 2:15 to reduce the congestion. What a lot of the parents do is they come along and they park, waiting to get into the school, which backs it up quite a bit. The... A lot of the parents, instead of getting in this queue, will come over here, park in the church parking lot, try to park along Chestnut. A lot of them park over here next to the racing museum, where the old building was tore down. Liberty Street is stopped off here. These people have to cross five lanes of traffic, and that's the Martin Luther King, which is a very busy street. There's also a train that comes through here. Typically, it's at 2:45, which then cuts off this traffic, and everything has to come around here. When these cars are parked along this street, including some of the ones for the... I get off again. Including some for the mud pies here, which uses this circular. The street is 26 feet wide. So when these cars are parked here, cars going either direction, east or west, along Seventh Street, have to maneuver. One waits for the other, sometimes they get head-on, et cetera. It's a mess. The school ended last Friday, but I'll say that I have, two weeks ago and three weeks ago, had to get out of my car in direct traffic. The last day of school was field day, when a bunch of people were crossing right here. I had to... I stopped in the middle of Martin Luther King with my hand out, stopping traffic, so that the kids could get across. What I'm... What I am headed towards is this is a safety issue. And one more thing about the width of the truck. When we had the gas leak over here at 7:57 the other day, two fire trucks was all that could sit here. I mean, they were squeezed together. It's that tight. What I am asking is that attached to this zoning change, the city not allow any parking along Seventh Street here. Presently, there is no parking allowed. Buxton Street, which is probably six blocks away, there starts no parking there, so it's all by signage, no parking, all the way up to the next road up, which I think is Innovation Corridor, named Boulevard or something. So from... There's about eight blocks of no parking. I'm asking... My time's up. I'm asking that if the planning board attached to this zoning change, that no parking be allowed along Seventh Street forever. That's a big request. I'll take my time and sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is all the time, but Jacqueline Spees had signed up. I'll give her a minute if you want to speak.
My name is Jacqueline Spees. I live at 100 Cassell Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 271... 27, zip code. And I have a concern about the erosion and the water damage to the homes on Cassell Street, in the back of their homes. And I was wanting to know, is there any kind of FEMA money or any kind of disaster restoration money to help that project back there? I know that there is a Dollar General being built down the street there.
I think the speaker may be addressing the South Suburban area plan.
Right, South Suburban here.
Okay. That's later in the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll now declare the public hearing closed. Where's Connie? I saw her back there. This parking issue. Do we want to address that, or Seventh Street?
Connie James was just here. She's... Okay, she's taking a phone call right now? Okay. So she's the one who would need to address that.
So while we're waiting for her, I presume that we have nothing to do with the city's notification when they're closing streets. I presume it's the city and whoever the... Whatever constructions going on, they're working with the city.
I think Connie can enlighten you on that, so... They're cool. They're talking about the issue we were talking about a few minutes ago.
So I just called to confirm with our staff about the closure on Patterson Avenue. The last approval extension that we had given them was last month. We... When there are events going on at Bailey Park, the contractor's been good to work with and is opening the street, so if there's ever a reason to open the street right now, they're using it primarily for deliveries. We have not heard anything about the road being requested to be closed for 36 months, and we certainly would not give that kind of blanket approval for closure of the street for that time period.
Address...
So I just wanted to clarify. You were speaking in front of the Fifth Street South? Is that right?
Chestnut Street.
Chestnut Street?
Between Fifth and Sixth. Is that what I understood?
Patterson? Oh, okay. Chestnut Street. Okay. So you were talking about Chestnut Street. Yes, so yes. Chestnut Street has been given approval to close as part of the Link apartment construction. Again, I don't know a time period for that, but I don't... We would not have approved 36-month time period. But it is a relatively low-volume street, and I can, I guess, assume that parking, the loss of parking along that street is the concern for the... Is it opposed to this? So...
Okay. And I think the other question was, is there parking allowed on, what is it?
Seventh Street.
Seventh Street. Whatever.
Yes, so there is a section where parking is allowed and where parking is not allowed. And you can see the graphic here. The areas that are marked in red are where parking is not allowed. There were, when we looked at this, signs missing in the field, so we sent out a work order to our shop to get those signs reinstalled, because there were some Duke Energy poles or... Utility poles that had been changed out, and the signs kind of went with the old poles, we believe.
All right. Any other questions? Connie?
Yeah, I had a question about if there's going to be a street closure. This was raised by one of the speakers. Is it possible to give a warning to the Arts Base School to let them know that this... There would be a street closure that might affect their circulation?
Yes, we certainly can do that. We typically, when we have requests like this, we send out an email to our marketing and communications folks, letting them know that this is coming. They... It goes to the web coordinator that manages all of the information. Street closures are always posted on the city's website, so we may not catch everyone every time, but it's always on the website, and if folks subscribe to our site, they can get updates as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Connie? Thank you.
Paul, I have a question about this, the 65 parking spaces. I mean, is that something we would get involved with or not?
Well, I think Chris can probably go into this better than me, but they have a continuing parking, onsite parking requirement under their present zoning, or under their... Even if it's under the approved zoning. So they would have to make arrangements to meet the parking requirement if they're taking up spaces, enough spaces, that it would not meet the zoning parking requirement for the existing units that are there. Chris, you want to...
Yeah, I was gonna say, of course, under the existing zoning, the PBS, they have a parking requirement on the site, and they're meeting that. With the condition that's on here, under other requirements, required parking for any use on the subject property, should only use parking reductions, discounts available to the pedestrian business zoning district. Essentially, that means they have to meet their parking requirement, and that would include throughout construction, so they'd either have to meet it on the site, or they'd have to provide viable, approvable lease space somewhere else to demonstrate how they're meeting compliance with the units that are currently there during construction. So to answer the question, yes, they would have to provide parking continuously based on if this zoning is approved today, or at City Council.
And if the residents felt like that's not happening, they come to inspections with a complaint, right?
Well, they would come to us with a complaint, keeping in mind, I mean, yeah, I mean, whenever they come in for construction, what we would be looking for is they would have to provide parking leases, or how they're going to provide the parking during construction. We would ensure that they're meeting those numbers, and then if through construction they lose one of those leases, spaces go away, we would take enforcement action to require them to demonstrate how they're meeting their parking requirement, if they have another lot, whatever. We would count spaces to make sure they were meeting their requirement.
Mr. Woolard, does that seem to answer your questions?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
There's not parking available with the reasonable distance.
There is no requirement for the distance that the lease spaces are. I mean, again, that's one of the things that, again, have to pass a straight face test. We wouldn't allow you to use a lot three miles away, but I mean...
It's gotta be reasonable. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Any board members? I need some sort of a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval, the additional requirements.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Smith. Second, Mr. Grubbs. Any discussion? No one in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
UDO 280 staff is here to request to amend regulations for Buffy Yards. UDO 280 staff is here to request to amend regulations for buffer yards. Some background information, buffer yards are provided to, they provide visual and functional separation between land uses for a number of reasons, to reduce potential nuisances, preserve character, and to protect the health and safety of the public. Legacy 2030, our comprehensive plan, recommended that we revise our standards in order to promote better integration of uses where appropriate and hopefully to improve the user friendliness of the ordinance. The regulations that we are proposing begin with the elimination of the type four buffer yard due to its similarity to the type three. So we're proposing moving forward with three types of buffer yards. Also to standardize the buffer yard width to 10, 20, 40, and 100 feet, except for the type three where we eliminated the 10-foot width due to concerns of plant crowding. Also to eliminate internal buffer requirements for zoning lots with split zoning, but maintain external requirements for adjoining properties. And also to treat single zoning lots with manufactured housing as single-family residential instead of multifamily. Here you have the number of plants required for the type one, type two, and type three buffer yards at the various widths for the trees, evergreens, and shrubs. These are the number of plants required per 100 linear feet. Here we also have, as you've seen before, a conceptual drawing of the plants, the plant types for the type one, type two, and type three, the tree, the evergreen, and the shrub. And as you can see, the density of the plants increases as you go from type one to type three. Further changes we had for the type two buffer yard, which is the one you most frequently see in application out in the field. The first change is the reduction of the minimum buffer yard width by five feet, which we hope would increase site design flexibility, particularly on smaller urban lots. Also, we increased the number of evergreen plants by 50% at the 10, 20, and 100 feet width. We brand these proposed changes by an experienced landscape architect who determined that the widths adequately screen adjoining properties and will accommodate better integration of neighboring uses, which was recommended in Legacy. Further changes proposed include requiring a buffer yard in the thoroughfare overlay district instead of a street yard to provide better screening. And also to allow developers to propose an alternative compliance, proposed buffer yard plan that differs from the specific requirements. We believe this will accommodate unique characteristics or utilize innovative design. And this proposal must meet the intent of the standard requirements. It will be approved by the Director of Planning and Development Services or Designee, and an appeal to the decision could be heard by the zoning board of adjustment. In summary, we consulted with our city's vegetation management department, and they believe that the proposed requirement should allow for healthy plant growth and longevity. Also, staff, we believe that the proposed amendment will allow for better blending of uses while providing adequate screening for adjacent properties. And we believe that the buffer yard types adequately screen adjoining properties according to their purpose statements. Furthermore, you heard abbreviated presentation of this at your May meeting, but we continued it to allow us an opportunity to hold a stakeholders' meeting with some interested parties, including citizens, that were invited, as well as design and real estate professionals. We held that meeting May 30th and listened to some of the concerns, mainly focusing on the minimum width for the type two buffer yard. And the staff recommendation is for approval.
Thanks, sir. Any questions of staff? This is the public hearing.
Yeah, I just wanted a little more information about the, the community meeting you held. Were there any design professionals or developers there?
No, none of them came to the meeting. We had several citizens that came.
Okay, and you said the concern was about the type two buffer? And what was that concern?
The concern was that the minimum width currently is 15 feet, and we are proposing a 10-foot minimum, which we believe would provide potentially up to 10 extra feet of developable space. The concerns of some of the citizens at the meeting was that reducing that minimum width would bring possibly parking at a facility closer to the neighbor, which may be a residence.
Thanks.
Mr. Farby, we're gonna take up, I guess, this afternoon, the active neighborhood report that Ms. Crum prepared. In it, it talks about buffer yards being used to help for, I guess, more activity, walkability, biking, and things like that. Anything addressed in here that meets that report's needs? And what are you envisioning in how buffer yards are gonna play a role in, in more active lifestyle?
Well, one of the main goals of the buffer yard ordinance in the integration of uses is that on the smaller lots that particularly have been vacant or underutilized, developers have looked at them and possibly felt that it was difficult to develop there due to space requirements for, say, the building or the parking needs or other activities on the site. So we do believe that in providing potentially smaller buffer yards, they would have more space, especially on these smaller lots. And that would, in turn, bring some amenities closer to neighborhoods and provide for more activity to walk to a store or a cafe or something like that.
Also, Walter, they're also talking about eliminating the buffer requirement in the case of split zoning? Is that right? So in those cases where people are doing mixed-use development of a larger tract that has split zoning, eliminating that buffer requirement helps in integrating the uses that they're, that they're planning for that.
Is any thought of, in these wider buffers of, of allowing paths and things like that? Is, was that in your fault pattern down the road?
If it was a mixed-use development, kind of planned as a mixed-use development, we'd be working with the developer to provide connectivity between there. I don't know that we would, you would have to, in a mixed-use development, you would have to buffer between the different uses that are there.
In wider buffer yards, UDO says, "Buffer yards may be used for passive recreation areas such as pedestrian, bicycle, or equestrian trails subject to the following limitations." And it kind of goes on to give some requirements. So you can already do that. If you've got a wide buffer, obviously in 10 feet, that doesn't really work. But in some of the wider buffers, you can do that.
Let me, let me go back to the 10 and 15 piece since it seems to have been, that was the issue. Now, in your presentation that you gave us at the work session, you gave us pretty, plenty of examples of what buffers looked like. But you didn't give us any examples that would show how development would be more possible with these. Do you have some more, I don't know, real-life situations where with a 10-foot, that it's gonna make a bigger difference without affecting the neighbors or, or, you know, causing issues with screening or, or whatever?
Well, as previously mentioned, the renewed, the reduced size of the buffer yard would provide more developable, developable space on the adjoining property that they could utilize. However, we have, as mentioned, increased the number of plantings. So although you may not have as much dimensional separation, you do have the screening, which will help to separate the two uses.
But I don't, I think to get straight to your question, I don't think we had any examples to show you of lots that are. But as, as lots get smaller, that, that the buffer size takes more usable area away.
So, I mean, what range of small, of lot are we talking about here? I mean, is this a residential-sized lot? Or is this something that's bigger than that?
Well, typically, you'd be talking about a non-residential zoning, which in some cases is pretty close to neighborhoods. Some cases might be on a, on a main street somewhere. So where it is up against residential is typically where you're gonna have that buffer requirement. So again, the, if you have a wider buffer requirement, that's gonna make it more difficult for tighter lots to, to be developed. So then what you're left with is those lots being undeveloped, and the development that would have gone there just goes out to another site somewhere. So, so I think what we're trying to keep in mind is, what are the possibilities for infill development? Now, if the board would like us to go and, and do some theoretical examples or find some actual lots there that that would make a difference, we'll be glad to show you some examples of that and draw in what a buffer would look like in a, in a typical building, if that's, if that's what you're wanting to see.
Well, I, you know, I think we've been seeing a proliferation of convenience store applications. And they're in a variety of building materials. And I know Washington Park really dealt with that issue over in their area. And, and I'm just trying to visualize what this might mean for neighbors if, if they weren't happy with the way the back of the store was looking or the traffic that was going on or dumpsters being placement, light placement in the parking lots and, and things like that. I, I'm, I just, I mean, I really appreciate all the examples that we've seen here of this, but I'm, I guess personally, I'm missing what real-life examples would work out in the other area. And that may not be an issue for the rest of the board, but it just is something I'm missing.
Yeah, I don't know that we've got a specific example or two to bring to you and show you. But what I can say is, on some of your other sites, when you're doing like low-intensity commercial development, like LB or LO or IP, and you're adjoining single-family, and currently there's that 15-foot requirement, this ordinance would allow you to go to 10 feet. It frees up five feet. So that's five feet along your entire perimeter. As we've gone in and added tree save and as we've added stormwater requirements over the years, that land starts to become a premium. So I know five feet, sitting here talking about, doesn't seem like much. But if you've got a perimeter, that five feet can make a difference. And we've seen some cases where five feet would have helped a lot. And if. I was gonna say, if you've got a, if you've got a 10,000-square-foot lot and it's zoned NB or LB, like Aaron was saying, whenever you go from a 10-foot, from a 15-foot buffer yard to a 10-foot buffer yard, and again, we're looking at, you know, an urban setting for a low-intense commercial use, but it still requires a type-two buffer yard. By going from that 15-foot to that 10-foot, you're freeing up 1,400 square feet of area that can be used to meet tree save, can be used to, you know, satisfy parking requirements, can be used to satisfy stormwater requirements. Again, as we continue to add regulations, it's getting, it's not impossible because folks still find a way to do it, but it's becoming more and more difficult. And again, to get to your question, we don't have any specific examples because generally we're able to massage the side or, you know, find a way to make things work. So whenever Walter sent us an email late last week or earlier this week about specific examples, you know, we're sitting there trying to rack our brains and we can't come, come up with any. That's because we generally find a way to make them work. But again, as you get more and more regulations, it becomes more difficult to squeeze everything in there.
I can think of a couple of examples where the petitioner had to maybe purchase an additional lot or use a lot for buffer. We've had those within the last couple of years. And one that I do recall is, it was near the Conoc area. It was, I think it was near Cassell Street. It was by the nitty-gritty across the street where they were, they were saving some land on one side of the, the stream there for the buffer. And I think they had to manipulate their, their plan to meet that.
I think the thing to remember, if you look at five distant, five feet in distance, probably less than from, between us, but you're adding a much denser buffer, you end up with more separation between the uses. If I had to choose, I would choose the actual physical buffer over five or even 10 feet, if it were me. But don't forget, you're getting additional density of plantings for that five feet that you're giving up. So I think it's a win for the neighbors to get additional actual physical plant material added to the buffer.
This is a public hearing. No one has signed up. I'd like to go ahead though and open it up. And then if the board decides they want to keep, continue this thing, we can talk about some more.
And I think you had and you closed the, the hearing last time, if I'm not mistaken. So if there are folks who want to speak, maybe the same as the other case, give, give some extra time for that.
Well, I said, no one has signed up. Does anyone here would like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Since there's no interest out there, I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, now, if the board wants to take this up or if you want to continue this, the work session, ask the staff to try to find some examples and we can take action at work session, I guess.
I would just like to say, I have some serious concerns about this, and they may be allayed by some additional examples. But, but my concern really is with the type two because we're going from 15 feet to 10 feet. And in my experience, when residents are concerned about non-residential next to them, they're always unhappy with the buffer yard. It's never wide enough. And so shrinking the buffer yard by five feet, I think is just gonna have the result of more dissatisfaction. And if you look at the design, the illustration you have here in the chart between type one and type two, which both would allow a 10-foot buffer, I don't see a real substantial difference, even with the additional plantings. I mean, they seem very similar. I think it would make, to me, it would make sense to go have type one, 10 feet, type two, 15 feet, type three, 20 feet. It would still simplify the rules from what they are now. And it would still give you three distinct buffer yard types rather than two that are very similar. And also, in this ordinance, there's a alternative compliance aspect to it, which would allow the flexibility that you're looking for. It would be an alternative to shrinking the type two down to 10, because you would allow the developer to propose an alternative in these very delicate situations that we've been talking about. And so I think that's enough of a, enough flexibility that we don't need to shrink the, the minimum down to 10 for the type two. That's just my, my opinion on this. But if, if other people would like to see more examples, I'd be happy to go along with that, too.
Can I ask a question, a clarifying question? Is the concern about the 10 feet, the proximity of parking and uses? Or is it the perceived visibility of seeing, the seeing through a screen that's planted in 10 feet versus seeing the screen planted in 15 feet?
I think it's, they, they like the separation with the, with the landscape buffer. And, you know, even though you have, you know, you're showing these plantings, in reality, there's a lot of things that play into how it's actually gonna look and how it's gonna be maintained and what sizes, whether they use large or small variety trees, whether the, the plantings die or don't die and all that kind of stuff. So it, I think people feel more secure having spatial separation rather than just planting, because you can't, you can't count on that. So I'm, I'm happy to vote, but if anyone would like to see some examples, that's fine with me, too.
There's nothing to vote on. I don't have a motion yet. Somebody wants a motion to approve our.
There's, there's no council committee meetings in July, so there's nothing that's pushing this to go today. So if you, if you want to discuss it some more at work session, we can do that.
I do just want to caution, I mean, again, unless, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good example that you gave. But again, us just trying to think of development projects we've dealt with, whether they be special use plans that have come here or whether they be just projects that we deal with from a permitting standpoint. We had a hard time coming up with projects. So I don't, you know, while we can continue and try to find some, I don't want to promise we're gonna be able to bring any back. So I just, I want to set that expectation if, if, if that's the way that you go.
Well, and if, and if the board thinks that going from 15 to 10 is a big issue, then that's, that's certainly your prerogative to say, we think it should stay at 15.
I'm, I'm trying to think of a good reason not, not to have it be 15. I'm trying to think of a good reason not to have it be 15. And I don't know about, how do these buffers help with sound? I mean, that's the kind of thing that I've gotten involved in with neighbors, is, you know, you end up with sound, you end up with lights that are there, security lights and things like, that are there all those periods of time, and I don't know whether five feet helps that or not.
Well, again, I mean, you keep in mind that noise ordinance is not a zoning function, and right now with only, right now, the only zoning district that has a specific lighting requirement is MRBS. I believe that may have made it onto our work program for next year as a possible discussion item, whether or not it's time for us to bring some specified lighting standards back to this board. But at this point, they're not there. So, while, you know, I guess there could be a study as far as how they do impact sound and light, there's not really currently any regulations that we enforce related to those, unless it's MRBS, or it's a specific condition such as the ballpark. There were some sound conditions that were placed on the ballpark whenever it was constructed.
Do you anticipate from sort of an inspections standpoint, or maybe it would be just zoning, that if it goes, if it goes to a 10 feet, that you're still going to have as many alternative compliance options? I mean, that has always been an option, right? Alternative compliance?
No.
Not, so it's just coming in with this?
Just in certain districts.
Just in certain districts.
MUS, MRBS, NB, and there may be another one or two that allow alternative compliance, but up and outside of that, it's a variance from the Board of Adjustment, if you want to do something other than what the ordinance dictates.
Well, you know, I would feel better than board members if we, since we're bringing in this alternative compliance. So, you know, the landowner still has many options on how to do this. If we just left that, the different types, 10, 15, or 20, or whatever, I'm assuming Melinda's thought that through, but, and then have these alternative compliance in there, then I think that gives developers a whole lot of options. In fact, they could go closer than 10 feet, right?
Well, I think doing a way of saying alternative compliance can handle everything kind of defeats the purpose of going at and establishing a known factor when you're designing, you know, designing a site, looking at it for its potential, if you know, well, I may or may not get it because I've got to go through this other process, as opposed to, these are what my options are, and starting from that, and trying to make it work with those options.
Well, I'm comfortable with the 10 feet, and I do like the fact that this reduces the regulation or restrictions that would be placed if we remained at 15 feet. I'm comfortable making a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Younger, second by Mr. Grubbs. In discussion? Those in favor?
Sorry, I didn't mean to vote yes.
I knew that.
Abstain or oppose, yeah.
Okay, so that passes 6 to 2. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, we're going to move on to the Northeast Suburban Area Plan Update, which was continued by you all a month ago to this time. Walter is the planner in charge of this, and he'll be giving you a brief presentation.
Good afternoon once again. The Northeast Suburban Area Plan Update is an update to the 2011 plan. We've been working on this since the end of 2016 and had four public meetings. We had good participation, and the citizens were very open and honest about their concerns and also their needs moving forward, which helped us in modeling our recommendations in the plan. The boundary for our planning area to the north is Old Hollow Road, to the east is the city limits, to the south is Business 40, US 421, and to the west is Germantown Road. Our area, about 88% is in the city limits and includes about 17,000 citizens. The existing land use for the area is largely residential, as you see with the yellow on the existing land use map. We have some concentrations of commercial and industrial uses along North Patterson Avenue and in the Augmern Station area. We also have a good bit of undeveloped, or underdeveloped land, as you see in the white on the map. The proposed land use map includes furthering our residential development in the yellow, also to fill in some vacant lots in our commercial and industrial areas. Our last major change you will see is the Bright Fuchsia area, which is our mixed-use development area, and it will be discussed further in the plan, in the presentation. In the plan, we identify activity centers where we would like to concentrate denser development of commercial uses and related uses. Our first activity center is the Old Rule Hall Road, Box Mountain Road. Activity Center is just south of Motor Road, it includes a number of auto, retail, and other commercial uses. The area currently has a number of site pedestrian and structural issues, and in the plan, we included a number of recommendations, which includes to add sidewalks and connections to the surrounding residential, to screen unsightly uses, and to resurface parking lots and add lighting, among other things. Our second activity center is the Augmern Station Activity Center. It includes the Augmern Station Shopping Center and the larger retail area located at the intersections of Old Rule Hall Road, Old Walkertown Road, and Liberty Street. Currently, as similar to the other area, the Augmern Station Activity Center suffers from some site pedestrian, structural issues, and vacancies. In the plan, we provided a conceptual drawing, which you see here, which shows how future development of the Augmern Station Shopping Center could look, and some of the recommendations in the plan include improved pedestrian features, connections, and sidewalks, also outdoor gathering space, as you see here, with lusher landscaping, building facade improvements, and also, we address the need to attract new retail office and medical services, possibly to this area, which citizens consistently said was needed in this area. In the Northeast Suburban Area, we have identified a large area for future development, the Motor Road Extension, for a mixture of uses of commercial, retail, residential office, and possibly recreation. This area includes about 115 acres of undeveloped or underdeveloped land. The community facilities map here, you see, the area includes several fire stations, six parks and recreation centers, schools, public schools and private schools. In the map, you will see a shaded area, which shows where the USDA identified a good portion of our area as a food desert, meaning many citizens are traveling a mile or more for a full-service grocery store. In the plan, we address the need to attract a full-service grocery store to this area, which is greatly needed amenity. Lastly, our area is rich in history and has a number of identified resources, which include the Edgewood Baptist Church, which is on the study list for the National Register, the Monticello Park neighborhood, as well as several other resources. Lastly, in May of this year, you all approved rezoning case for Mr. Trolinger at the intersection of Harbor School Road and Lansing Drive, going from RS9 to limited business L zoning. And before you, you have some language in regards to this site. The City Council approved the rezoning also at its meeting. We are asking for your approval of the changing of the language in our land use in regards to this site, from moving it from single-family to low-intensity commercial. And in the language you have before you includes several recommendations for the site. concludes the presentation.
Sure. This is a public hearing, does anyone like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Now, declare the public hearing closed. What wishes the board?
A move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Younger, second by Mr. Lee, including the one change.
Yes.
In discussion? Those in favor? And opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you, Walter.
Now, we'll move on to the South Suburban Area Plan, and Steve Smitherman will make that presentation.
I'm going to call a good evening, members of the board, after work hours. I'm going to give you a brief overview and touch upon some of the major topics of the South Suburban Area Plan update. There was most active community participation throughout this whole process. In no meeting were there less than 30 people. There is a good turnout tonight, and I'm sure they'll make comments on the plan. As far as proposed land uses and activity centers, you can see the majority of the area shown as yellow, which is single-family residential. There are three corridors. The one is along US Highway 52, which is both an existing and proposed industrial corridor, and then also the Winston-Salem Southern Railway line is also parallel to US Highway 52. There is, Peters Creek Parkway is a mixture of commercial uses that are shown in red, institutional uses such as schools and churches shown in blue, and areas shown in brown, which reflect multifamily developments. There are five activity centers that are circled in red. There are three along Clemensville Road. The one furthest to the right is the intersection of South Main Street and Clemensville Road near US 52. The next one is the intersection of Clemensville Road and Old Salisbury Road, west of Peters Creek Parkway. And the third one is on the western border, it's at the intersection of Everett Road and West Clemensville Road. There are two larger activity centers. One is Peters Creek, which is in the center of the slide, that has Walmart, Lowe's, Out Parcels, and multifamily development to the west behind those uses. And further to the south, at the Davidson County line, is Oliver's Crossing Activity Center, which has the Oliver's Crossing Shopping Center and a couple multifamily uses around By far, the dominant topic throughout this whole process was Sides Road, and that was a discussion at all of them. The current plan shows the uses for Sides Road as being a mixture of either office or multifamily uses, restricting that because of concerns of the Kings Tree neighborhood to just office use. You can see the area on the right side of the slide that shows the properties in that area. Let me go to the next slide. The major concern was the, one of the major concerns was the intersection of Sides Road and Peters Creek Parkway. There was concern about the volume of traffic on Sides Road with cut-through traffic, and there was also concern about the safety of the intersection of Sides Road and Peters Creek Parkway for accidents. The Transportation Department did a, what amounted to a preliminary study, was not a complete one, looked at the area very detailed, but decided there needed to be a more detailed study done that looks at a larger area to decide what is the best treatment for the intersection of Peters Creek and Sides Road, whether that be a median closure, median along Peters Creek, or whether that be with very controlled left-turn lanes into Sides Road. Now, one alternative that staff devised, which is on the right-hand side of the slide, shows the possibility for commercial closest to the intersection with Sides Road, in exchange for constructing a realignment of Sides Road, which gets rid of the S curve, which you see in the middle slide with the X's on it. And the idea would be you'd extend Sides Road up through a new development, the lower level would be lower intensity, or the southern portion would be lower intensity commercial. You would go north to an area that would be townhomes, closest to Peters Creek Parkway, and then we'll make a 90-degree turn to Sides Road, which would be retained for only single-family homes across from the Kings Tree neighborhood. And so, the idea is that in exchange for allowing some low-intensity commercial, you could potentially get a road built that would alleviate some of the dangerous S curve. Now, we want to stress, this is only a concept, it's one idea. And a lot of people thought, well, is this what you're going to require? And the answer is no. This is what we're suggesting as a starting point, if somebody wanted to try to do commercial at the closest point of the intersection. But I want to stress that that's only an illustration and is not a requirement. We did also add the Sides Road area vicinity to, as one of several areas for a proposed community park, and that was in response to the calls from the citizens. A lot of them would like to see a park put on Sides Road. We received and forwarded to you several emails that suggested that. And while we would love to have a park at Sides Road, our area plans just give general vicinities and do not specify specific locations, and you know that's the case, so this has been added as one of several. So, the process of actually deciding the specific location of the parks done through the Recreation and Parks Department in conjunction with their boards and City Council. The second major topic was dealt with special land condition areas, and that evolved from the rezoning case that you had last month with the former Texaco station at the corner of Clemensville Road and Conoc. There was concerns that there were other similar uses on Clemensville Road, and they wanted to make, they were concerned about the impact of those and how we treated those. So, the two areas that we looked at and went back and looked at was the area between, of Clemensville Road, between US 52 and Peters Creek Parkway, and also the area of South Main Street, south of Interstate 40, and both of those areas are shown circled in red. Now, there are 32 sites with special land use conditions on them, and that most of those are retained from the last plan, and this is one of the areas that has one of the largest number of those. So, we tried to simplify, and we've categorized a lot of those into three categories. The first of which is a category A, which means that the use is non-conforming, it may be a commercial use operating in a residential zoning district. It has been there, is considered grandfathered, and will continue, but if the owner wanted to legitimize it forever and seek a rezoning, the plan would say that we wouldn't recommend it and wanted to revert to residential zoning. The second category, category B, is a list of 12 locations that talk about grandfathered uses that we think, given the context of the surrounding properties and location of the property, could be suitable for rezoning to legitimize the use, but have it be to the most restrictive zoning district that allows it. Couple examples are White Service Station on South Main Street, south of Folinsby Road, and the other is the CLG Corporation, which is an office use at the corner of Stockton Street and East Harson Avenue. The third type are properties or sites that are zoned properly, but they don't really blend in with the general land use pattern, in the sense that we don't want, wish those uses to expand, or adjacent properties get a similar zoning and run the risk of stripping out parts of Clemensville Road. of Clemensville Road or South Main Street. So, we designate those as category C, which says they're properly zoned. They're fine, but we don't wish to have those, the next-door neighbor have their property rezoned to the same district. And in meeting with the Conno Hills Community Association after the rezoning case last month, I was very concerned about this. And in meeting with them, we developed another category, category D, that we recommend as an amendment to the plan, that you should have those, where it should have a handout that indicates those changes. We're asking for a category D, which would be five locations on, a couple on Clemensville Road and a couple on South Main Street, that would be suitable for rezoning, but not to the district that allow the current use. One of those is Conno Automotive. It's an automotive repair shop. We recommend it be rezoned, but not to a district that will allow the auto repair, but more to a district that will allow a bookstore, beauty salon, et cetera. The same for sinks, plumbing, and electrical contractors, which is on South Main Street. They're a little bit too intense, given their context and the surrounding neighborhood, to be rezoned to allow them to continue forever. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, Steve, this time?
Mr. Smitherman, the, going back to the Sides Road, I'd expressed concern about this during the work session. What is the current zoning of that area? I'm looking at one online area now, and it says it's an over-five-acre residential zoning. What is the current recommendation for that, under the current area plan?
The current area plan recommends Sides Road for office and/or multifamily use.
The current plan does?
Current 2011 plan.
Now, if you're asking about zoning, it's zoned RS-nine, single-family residential.
RS-nine, right.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
I have a question. Steve, you go back to C, I think it was.
Category C.
Category C. So going back to last month's case, what happens if, say, unlimited wireless goes out of business? Could that property, would that stay at the same zoning, or would it be rezoned residential? What's the?
No, that would stay at the same zoning. These are already zoned.
Okay.
Category B would be the ones that would be like the one last month, where we were zoning it to the most restrictive district that allowed that particular use. And that's most similar to the case last, last month.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want, I just want to emphasize, just for the folks that are here, what an area plan does and doesn't do as it relates to parks. Area plans do not determine the specific site of a park. What we, what we try to do in area plans is, is look at the land use, look at community facilities, look at needs for improvement in certain areas there. And when it comes to new community facilities, we make general recommendations. You saw those blobs on the map there, but we take pains not to identify a specific site because there's a whole different process of budgeting for those facilities, of determining what sites work best, negotiating prices and things like that. All of those are much more detailed than the scope of an area plan. So, what we tried to do in this case is certainly to acknowledge that this area is lacking in parks and could use some additional park facilities, but we showed kind of a general, general idea that something could be there, but we, we go ahead with our land use recommendations so that if it's, if a park is not in that general area, then we have other land use recommendations there, because a park is basically one use, one use only. It's a public, it's a public use. So, that's what we try to do. I know in some of the emails I've seen the last couple, a couple days, some of the folks who are writing in were thinking that this, that this public hearing was solely about whether a park is going to be in that location. And that's not, that's not really the role and the function of an area plan. It kind of, it kind of gets, it kind of sets the table for the discussion, but it doesn't, it doesn't make the decision as to a park being there. That's a different process.
Steve, can you go to the slide before this? Some of the concerns that were raised had to do with traffic. By chance, and maybe you said this already, if so, I missed it. The proposed rerouting, if you will, the red line, does that address that? Did any members of the community speak to that, thinking that that would solve some of the issue?
The sense I got from the community was, if somebody came in and built exactly that, they seemed to be okay with that.
Yeah, and the thing I want to emphasize is that we were dealing with a couple of issues here. One is the Kings Tree folks have consistently been against having multifamily or commercial on Sides Road immediately across from the entrance to Kings Tree. And so, in our thinking about this, we were thinking, having single-family homes on the west side of Sides Road directly across would help with that land use transition. But in terms of the road, having the road, the traffic network kind of filter through that area behind the single-family zones would discourage traffic from using Sides Road as a cut-through and hopefully keep them on Peters Creek Parkway to go up to Clemensville Road. Now, not everyone's going to do that, but if you make it more difficult for people to do that, then that's going to, that's going to make that work better. Also, it recognizes that along Peters Creek Parkway, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of difficult to market single-family homes there, so you need something that, that is more feasible there. But at the same time, we were sensitive to the citizens in the area not wanting apartment complexes. So that's why we tried to keep that as low intensity as possible. So that, that was sort of the idea behind that concept there, to just illustrate that, how that could solve the, both the land use and the traffic issue.
Thank you.
Let me ask another question, Mr. Smitherman. The, the changes that you're bringing in to us today, did you give the property owners of these properties an opportunity to chime in on this as well?
No, I thought of the exact question. The reason is, this is just a plan. It's not, it's not a rezoning case. It's not proposing to change it. It's just saying that if it changes, we may not recommend this intensive district as what's there.
Yeah.
And a lot, and a lot of these properties had the same type condition on them in the previous plan.
Well, I still remain concerned, as I expressed before, of, I mean, I am just perfectly excited about citizens getting behind and coming out to an area plan, and this really showed how citizens can be involved, and it's wonderful, just absolutely wonderful, because we've had some other area plans that have just had very poor attendance. And I just wonder about us coming up with these changes without going back to the process and, and giving everybody an access and an opportunity to talk about these things. I just, I feel like we're, we're going around the corner on some of this, and I still want to hear from the citizens that are signed up today about the Sides Road, because as I asked before, how did, how did you, as staff, come up with saying the plan that you had in there was acceptable, when we've been down this road with the neighborhoods on other zoning cases before and have heard, "We want residential there"? And, and so I was trying to be sure that there's a comfort level that worked through this process with that. And I'm not hearing the methodology of how that happened at this point.
Well, and let me just kind of give you the parallel. Think about all of the other area plans, and we've made a special effort over the last, all of the area plans since the Legacy 2030, to take specific areas and do some design ideas about how an area could be developed. We don't, we're just illustrating what could happen to kind of turn area. You just saw the northeast suburban area with Ogden Station. Well, we didn't go to the owners of Ogden Station and say, "What do you think of this?", you know, but we're just trying to illustrate a way to revitalize that area and make it more of a mixed-use center and all, and all that. So, just because an area plan makes a recommendation on a land use or gives an illustration like that, doesn't mean, when it comes down to a rezoning, that the rezoning would be approved. I mean, as you know, it goes through a very public process, and even if the plan said it ought to be exactly that and only that, that doesn't, that doesn't guarantee a rezoning is, is actually going to happen. And in fact, under the last, under the current plan before this one, there was a multifamily proposal that came in that could be argued, that it was, you know, consistent with the land use recommendation there, but the zoning, the rezoning didn't go anywhere. It stopped.
Oh, I had a question related to that. So now, the recommendation is, is office for this piece, right? So, when, if a petition came in for multifamily, I'm just wondering how you would analyze that in terms of intensity, if the plan recommends office, would you be more likely to approve multifamily, or would that be considered too intense?
Well, it probably depends on the density, because the case that, the zoning case that came in a couple years ago in there, I think was, I'm forgetting, it was more like twelve, fifteen units to the acre, whereas, whereas something like that might be more like five or six units to the acre. Not that much more dense than single-family development. So, it really would depend on what's there. And that's why it's so hard in an area plan to kind of pin down exactly, precisely what development and only that development is acceptable, because you're, you're trying to just give some guidance, but allow the rezoning process to kind of nuance the details there.
If you have any questions, let's go ahead and do a public hearing. I want to ask the first person signed up as a proponent, Brian Allison.
Good evening, members of the Winston-Salem-Frisleif County Planning Board. My name is Brian Allison. I reside at eleven forty-one Bent Grass Lane in Winston-Salem, two seven one two seven. I've been standing here before for the same reason, to discuss Sides Road traffic concerns. The decisions made by this body and our elected officials have direct and long-lasting impact on our community. All future proposed development regarding Sides Road impact, not only the quality of life, but also have life and death implications for residents that reside in the surrounding neighborhoods, and must be given serious consideration. The increased traffic has adversely impacted the quality of life and safety of Kings Tree and surrounding neighborhoods. There have been fatalities and numerous accidents on Sides Road attributed to speed along the S curve. Sides Road was never designed to accommodate the traffic volume and dangerous manner exercised by many drivers. The proposed development options suggest during the South Suburban Area Plan discussions for Sides Road look good on paper, but will require numerous landowners' degree and will take years to come to fruition. We request that, before any future development materializes, the configuration of Sides Road and increased traffic be given top priority to reduce cut-through traffic in neighborhoods, as that narrow, dangerous, curvy road directly impacts the lives of thousands of residents that reside in the surrounding neighborhoods. With cut-through traffic through Kings Tree and Sides Road enjoying a walk and run is a challenge. We need a nice community park in walking distance, and ask that a park be given serious consideration for a portion of land parcels alongside the road. The city already owns a parcel of land with a water tower on it. It would make logistic and practical sense for the city to acquire adjoining land for creation of a park for the betterment of community residents. It would enhance the proposed future development plan for Side Road. There's a lack of park space below Clemensville Road serving the whole population in the South Suburban area and the Peters Creek Parkway Parkway. Peters Creek Parkway would benefit more from having some green space around the water tower as an iconic symbol, as well as providing recreational needs than additional commercial developments would already, are already heavily developed corridor. Sides Road is a very vulnerable and fragile area, and for residents that live in the surrounding neighborhoods, it's our only buffer from Peters Creek Parkway. And as residents, we are in favor of removing the multifamily option from the existing 2011 South Suburban Area Plan. We have a rare opportunity to solve multiple problems with proper use of the space. Recreational opportunities reduce traffic congestion and accident problems. Addition of green space along a very busy, invisible commercial corridor, now is the time to commit for the betterment of the whole area. A community park would improve the quality of life and housing values for residents and surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, sir. Next person signed up in support of the area plan is Elaine Reneger.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Reneger. I live at eleven oh eight Tynell's Court in Winston, obviously, which is just not far from Sides Road. I don't have anything fancy like Brian does. It's, I'm a teacher and it's end of the year, so sorry about that. But the way I see this is, this is an opportunity for us to have a DMZ in that area. I don't know how many of you all were on the board, you know, in the past few years, but we've been at war over that Side, Sides Road property, and it's going to continue. We've had three hundred people at meetings, and the war will go on. We are going to fight to the very bitter end to keep that property from destroying our quality of life. I was, I was almost fascinated with all the talk about buffer areas and things like that. I mean, just give us that one little piece of a buffer area, and maybe we can put this war to bed once and for all if we have it as a park. And there's nothing there. I mean, I was looking, just looked on Google Maps and looking for City of Winston Parks, and if you look at, it's not like my elementary school. So here we have all these City of Winston Parks, until you get down in our area. And yeah, we do have parkland. We have the tennis and all kinds of things, balls bouncing back and forth, and people running around and all. It's, it's, it's an intense sort of a recreational area. Why can't we just have a nice little quiet strolling park with a gazebo, fountain, or something like that, where, you know, I see people all the time, women with their strollers and their babies and the little kids dodging cars and traffic, not just in Kings Tree, but in the surrounding neighborhoods. There's nowhere for them to walk peacefully and have these little babies grow up to where they don't have all this stress, you know, inflicted upon them. But it's, it's a chance now for us, we have our tax dollars going up into the northern areas of town. What would be wrong with us finally having our tax dollars going into a nice, you know, more relaxed environment, sort of a park where people could go? We could have concerts on Sunday afternoons or something of that sort in the summer, and enhance the quality of life for, for our area. And, you know, people at the shopping areas could go to lunch there or something in the spring especially, and in the fall, and have a much more relaxing area to, to be in. And we stop the war, basically, because you, you are going to have, we've got three hundred people now, you are going to have a war over that property from now to the bitter end. That's just all there is to it, because we're the ones living there. We see the cars shooting through at fifty miles an hour, right past our neighborhoods and right past little kids and people walking with strollers and so forth. So we're going to fight for it. It's not going to end, and if you turn that into a park, we'll shut up and we'll get out of your way and leave you alone. Thank you.
Thank you. How much time we got left?
About six minutes.
One minute, okay. Yeah, but I have someone that signed up ahead of you, please. Fred Lowry.
Well, we've gone from afternoon to evening, so before we go tonight, I'll make mine real short, to the point.
Need your name and address, please, sir.
Fred Lowry, four two two Gus Hill Road, Clemens, North Carolina, two seven zero one two. And I'm here referring to the property at twenty-two oh eight Old Salisbury Road. And my request is right to the point. We're sort of like a little island that's left here of where it used to be residential, and there's commercial all around us. And we'd like to request that we get commercial zoning there and become uniform to the, about half a dozen other businesses that are right there in the area. And I've talked to a number of people so far. I don't know of any objections. We're right next to Advent Church, which is the church I go to, and they're supposed to be in the process of drafting a letter of approval, but there are no, no problems. And... And when I get up there mowing grass, I have observed there are apparently a lot of people in this densely populated area that don't even have cars, because I've seen people walking apparently all the way up to the shopping center on Peters Creek Parkway and coming back with food and produce and things, you know. So, think that it would not, only not be a problem, I think it would maybe actually be a very helpful thing if we could have a commercial setting there. And we are buffered all the way around. We've heard the word buffer a lot. There's a little buffer area behind that, and there is a, we're in between two churches, and there's, so there are no houses behind, and there are no houses directly in front, no houses on either side. So, we're just basically the last little group that's not commercial. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve, what, can you address that?
Yeah, I'll offer a point of claim. This is, if you look at the slide, they're talking about the Clemensville Road, Old Salisbury Road Activity Center, and the area that's in the red circle that's shown for office, the property owners and developers and real, would like to see that corner shown for commercial.
To the rezon, they can ask, follow a rezoning petition.
The last plan showed this for office. The concern of not showing it for retail automatically is the relationship with the, the churches that are surrounded on three sides. We did mention if they came in with something that was conditioned properly, you know, might be possible.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay. You want to speak in support?
Yes.
Okay.
Five and a half minutes, but remember, one of our speakers earlier signed up for the wrong case, and I suspect they want to probably say something on this one as well.
Support for or against, I got a feeling we're going to hear the rest.
All I want to know is, did the Planning Morgen Getness Amendment, you have the copy of all this?
Hello, I'm Carolyn Highsmith, I live at 3335 Anderson Drive, 27127. I'm here today on behalf of the Condon Hills Community Association in support of the South Suburban Area Plan update, provided the Planning Department's amendment that you've all received, noting changes to five non-conforming properties on West Clemensville Road and South Main Street, along with some additional editing changes are incorporated into the South Suburban Area Plan update that is being presented today before the Planning Board. The changes to these five non-conforming properties are being recommended as suitable for rezoning only to a low-intensity commercial and/or office zoning district, and are being recommended to be rezoned to a special-use zoning for improving the compatibility of the property and adjacent residential uses. And the primary changes, that's why I referred to this, are on, is page three, and the new designation of asterix D. I can list those, but that will take some time, so you'll just read those, there are five of those, plus the additional changes and strikeouts in this document. I urge the Planning Board to approve these supplemental changes to the South Suburban Area Plan update, so that the Condon Hills community, community and surrounding area and neighborhoods will be able to fully support the entire South Suburban Area Plan update. Also, the Condon Hills community is also supporting additional changes to the update plan that, that has been presented today by the King Street neighborhood, where they are recommending a park as the primary future use for the property alongside, alongside Sides Road. So we support them in that change as well. Finally, I would like to recommend that future area plan update sessions be extended to five weeks instead of the current four, where there, there are four resident meetings, and all final land use recommendations are presented at the fourth update meeting before the final drop-in meeting. This extra update meeting should help to give the needed time for maximum discussion of all area plan concerns. And in conclusion, we urge you to support these amendment changes provided by the Planning Department to address non-conforming property concerns along the West Clemensville Road and South Main Street areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in support of the area plan?
Is everyone familiar with their handout? I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I thought I mentioned it made my memory.
You did. Okay. Now, turn, ma'am, are you going to talk in support of it, or are you opposed to it? Did you want to?
I say support.
She's got a question.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay. Go forward. You're still missing.
Again, my name is Jacquelyn Spees. Live at 100 Cassell Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27127. The properties that I'm talking about is on the Cassell Street, South Side. The water in the back of those homes, 15 homes, have totally ruined those backyards. I want to know, is there any kind of help that Winston-Salem can help those residents with, those 15 families? Any kind of FEMA money? Any kind of home restoration money? Any kind of money that can help? Because when I, when I first moved there in 1972, I was about 10, 11, 12 years old, I'm 56 now. You could just walk across there. But now, you could take, drive a, a big bus through it now. The homes, and I have had my niece and my son fall into that area back there, just so happened they're still alive. So I, I just want to know, is the city going to be able to do anything about that?
I'm not sure this is an area plan issue, but Paul, can you address this, though?
It sounds like there's probably a combination of stormwater issues and housing condition issues and, and things like that. So, that's probably something that we'll need to get in touch with a couple of different departments on, and see what, do you know if there have been conversations between you all and, and those departments in the past?
Yes, but look how long.
Okay.
Paul, there was an article in the paper within the last two weeks that talked about this, and it discussed some ongoing discussions that have been going on since, I want to say, the late 70s, maybe early 80s, with Western Electric Expansion and some other things, which, you know, Keith and Keith Huff, who's the stormwater director, and Greg Turner, the Assistant City Manager of Public Works, are aware of the situation. So, yeah, they have had discussions, but again, I don't, kind of echoing what the chairman said, I don't, you know, I mean, again, I, I think it would more be Community Development, Housing and General Government Committee, or Public Works Committee.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be kind of dealt with beyond the scope of an area plan there, but I think those, those departments would be key there, but.
But is there going to be anything done about it? But look how long it's been going on.
Right, well, we're, the, the.
You keep saying, you keep, you keep saying you're going to do something, do something, do something, but when are you going to do something?
Right, but the Planning Board isn't the, isn't the board that decides whether it's done through that. It's, it's those.
It's the store.
It's those departments, and if they have money, it might need some money from the City Council in order to, to address those issues. So, not being familiar with the discussions that have been going on with the Assistant City Manager, I, I don't know exactly what they would be, but Greg Turner, if Assistant City Manager, he would be the person probably who could best address both of those.
Greg Turner.
Uh huh.
1970. Was this 2000, what, 17?
Ms. Spees, we'll have.
That's a long time.
Staff, pop up with you and make sure you got the name and contact information.
All right. But I just want you to be aware of it, since 1970.
If I may, Ms. Spees, Ms. Spees, before you leave, if I may, provide you with a bit of direction that you perhaps and the other residents of that neighborhood may choose to follow. For you in particular, do you happen to know if you have flood insurance?
I don't know.
Okay. I would suggest that you check into your.
But what if you don't, what if you don't have flood insurance?
Okay, I'm trying to provide a little bit of direction for you and the other residents. This is just a suggestion.
Okay, I'm just going to say, no. No, we don't have no flood insurance. So what if you don't have no flood insurance? I'm just saying, no, no.
For direction purposes, for direction purposes, to be helpful here in this situation, because perhaps your question is being addressed to the wrong group. So I'm trying to provide you with a little bit of direction for some help, and I will even take it upon myself if you'd like to give me a call to help you.
What's your name?
My name is Tommy Hicks.
Tommy Hicks.
And I work in the banking industry, and I, that's why I ask you if you had, you say you in particular don't have any flood insurance.
No.
Would.
I don't think flood insurance would cover that.
You don't think so?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something to this?
Sure.
So, Councilmember Taylor's aware of this issue. It's been brought up in the neighborhood before. This item was on the agenda for the May 9 Public Works Committee meeting. Says Greg Turner gave a presentation. Councilmember Taylor requested staff put together information that would provide options available to help with these issues on Cassell Street, and Councilmember Montgomery requested information regarding the success of other neighborhoods and compelling neighbors into stormwater projects actions. It looks like it was held in committee until June, so council's aware of this. There's an ongoing issue with this, and it's been brought to council's attention.
I understand that, but it's time to get to work and get some done, something done about it. I know, I know James Taylor.
Okay, that's.
You said a meeting's set to address this, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Is anyone here like to speak in opposition to the area plan? If there are none, I'll declare the public hearing closed, with the wishes of the board.
You know, I, I wanted to follow up with maybe one or two of the speakers. I don't, I don't know, is, is Mr. Allison still here?
We have a gentleman.
Okay. Well, Ms. Renninger was the other one. Ms. Renninger, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I've, I've been trying to determine, you know, the community process on the Sides Road, and, and should there be a recommendation other than leaving the, the zoning as RS9? Is, is your desire, did you feel like you had agreed with the proposed scenario of changing that to multifamily use and, and mixed use in, in that area? Or, or did you want to change the zoning in, in that area on, on Sides Roads?
We want to park.
Okay, you want to park, but I, and that may or may not occur, but I mean, I, what I'm interested in is, is there's a plan in front of us that comes up with a recommendation, and regardless of what is said here, it does affect me when somebody comes up with the, with the plan, and when the staff says, well, this is in, this is in agreement with the area plan, it does affect my sense of a vote. So, I'm trying to figure, is the neighborhood happy with a recommendation that changes that zoning potentially from what it currently is, which is RS9, which is more like single-family homes?
No, they won't be thrilled with anything unless it's, you know, single-family homes or a park, basically.
Okay.
Because, you know, it's sort of like what this gentleman was saying earlier, that if it were something like, you know, a very low intensity or low density, low-intensity commercial or low-density residential, then that, that would be one thing. But there were crimes committed in the process of all of this, on the other side, against us, and the police were involved, and it has been a very dirty and nasty process all throughout. And it's not, it's not a joke at all. There's a lot of money involved, and the other folks are, you know, ready to fight and fight big time to get that money. But what we're saying is.
And I'm aware.
If they get their money, and if they sell it, then maybe they'll be happy and we'll be happy, and everybody can settle down and go about their business.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. I think what we're coming about is, is whether to recommend this to the City Council, and I want to have a comfort level that the community is in agreement with the plan, and I'm not hearing you say that. And I think, I think Mr. Allison made one comment that was pretty clear, that he did not agree with a change of zoning on that as well, and that there had been some discussions in the neighborhood about that. So, I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether I should vote to recommend this to the council, or, or whether it should go back to the, to the neighbors for more discussion.
Yeah, we would hope that you vote against it, because it, the more cars that we have there, the more lives are going to be put in jeopardy. And when you start having another complex, apartment complex or multifamily or whatever, how do you control the density? How do you keep it down to a reasonable amount? And once you change the zoning, then who knows? Katy bar the door, what's going to go on there, and it's just going to turn into a free-for-all. So, we're against it.
So, are you saying that, that the neighborhood would not support a scenario like staff presented where the road was rerouted and some?
I think the road, that sounded great, but multifamily, when you're talking about another apartment complex, does not sound great. Having something done about that road would be wonderful, so no one else gets hurt. But, you know, all we're trying to do is find some way to calm down the traffic and to leave it a nice, quiet neighborhood. It's, it's sort of a premier, at least King Street and that area, sort of a, it's, it's the flagship community for that area. It, it sort of raises the bar. So, do we want to lower the bar, or are we going to support keeping the bar higher? And if you want the southern part of the city to develop in a nice and friendly and qual, you know, higher quality of life manner, then we've got to support that somehow. It's, there's just no other way around it. We need a better quality of life than what we've got in terms of traffic and the dangers that are going on in that neighborhood. So, that's what we're trying to keep out the crime, and we're still prepared to keep fighting, and if we have to, we will. We just would like to see it all settle down and stop, and just, just let us live our quiet little lives and go about our business, and, and we won't bother y'all anymore, I promise. Well, until something else comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt, do you have a comment you want to make?
Thank you, Chairman King. I just wanted to point out a couple of things and just make sure that the board is all on the same page regarding what the current plan recommendations are versus what the previous plan recommendations are, and just talk a little bit about the public discourse on this. But the previous 2011 plan is the document that recommended either office or multifamily development alongside Sides Road. As Steve mentioned in his presentation, one of the biggest, most well-discussed areas of this whole plan was Sides Road, and it became clear very early on that the neighbors didn't want to see commercial or multifamily on Sides Road. At the same token, there were definitely some property owner interest who came and participated in this meeting, and they were certainly advocating offline, as they had in the previous plan, to make sure they had some usable, non-single-family use of the property. So, it was at that point that the staff basically came up with the development concept that would kind of provide an alternative to just office use of the site, that would try and address the neighbor's concern about cut-through traffic, and also provide some sort of option for the developers or owners of this property that was non-single-family in nature. So, I just wanted to make clear that what Steve was showing you, this concept here, isn't a by-right concept. Someone would have to piece together this whole area south of the water tower for the plan to even support something that wasn't office here. And also, I think that the citizens who participated in this process, as, as the last speaker mentioned, they absolutely would prefer, if they had their druthers, for the property to remain exactly as it is now, under its current RS9 zoning. But I think during the couple of meetings where we talked about this, there was a general understanding that this sort of compromise scenario would provide some extra protection to the King Street neighborhood by having some single-family homes and reducing the cut-through potential, but would also meet the development faction halfway. And also, the scenario recognizes the fact that, from a planning perspective, we don't think it necessarily makes a lot of sense to have single-family homes backing up to a numbered state highway where there's commercial zoning on the other side of the street and to the north and south. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And we all need to keep in mind that we're not rezoning anything right now. If any of these things happen, they have to come through here for approval anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And let me, let me just also point out that if you look at the plan, page 43 is about two-thirds of a page on Sides Road, this area. It talks about the, the idea of maybe a mixed-use development possibility, if it was kept pretty low-key, but it also includes in there, reference to a city park may also be incorporated as a component of mixed-use development here. And then back over on page 52, under Recreation Facilities, it is also mentioned as a possibility in this area for, a possibility for a new community park. So, so the plan is not devoid of a reference to that, it's just not trying to say this is the only thing that, that, that can happen. It's, it's putting that out as, as a number of the possibilities that can happen there.
It's putting that out as a number of the possibilities that can happen there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval as submitted by the staff.
Second. With the changes, okay. Motion by Mr. Grubbs, second by Mr. Leek. Where there's...
Yes.
That's the staff's recommendation, correct.
Okay. Have a motion for approval, is in discussion?
Well...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the staff's working on the nonconforming issues, because I thought that was very important, and I think that we got a much better result I'm also in agreement in the statement that Ms. Highsmith made about the need to change the area plan process to add maybe at least one more land use meeting, because I think, you know, this plan really showed that there were some unresolved issues that didn't get totally worked out in the process. And this Sides Road is, I see as one of the unresolved issues that still is not resolved in my mind. And I'm not sure, and I think maybe if we had another meeting, maybe we would have worked some of this out, but from the public hearing and since Mr. Allison is already gone, it's kind of hard to know exactly what the neighbors would prefer in terms of whether they want this proposed mixed-use concept to be included, or whether they would prefer just a straight-up office recommendation. But I thought I heard Mr. Allison say that he was not, that he would like to have the mixed-use concept design removed. But in terms of the issue with the park, I mean, that's very, very difficult to resolve. I think maybe needs some more discussion, but if we're talking about what this, what is a reasonable recommendation for this land, I mean, it seems like office is pretty reasonable to me, so, but there's enough questions in my mind about how, you know, how the neighbors feel about resolving it, that I think it needs some more discussion. But I'm prepared to vote on this, I just think that maybe between now and the time it goes to city council, there should be further discussions on the Sides Road issue.
Any other discussion?
Well, again, I don't feel it's good for us, and there's no advantage to us to send something to city council that has unresolved issues and maybe misunderstandings about particular things in there, particularly when we've had such good outpouring of interest in this, that it would seem to me that we should go back to the neighborhood, let them resolve, not just the neighborhood, but the property owners themselves, give them an opportunity, let them resolve this and bring it in. That's what the planning process is, and this is the most democratic, the most opportunity for citizens to really get involved and talk about it, and they need another chance to look at this, and if they're happy with that, fine, but I don't see any advantage of sending this to city council with this kind of unclear issues, and particularly some of the bumpy road that we've had in this whole presenting of the South Suburban Plan to us. So I can't support it at this time, and I'm really not happy about not supporting an area plan. I don't like to be in that kind of a situation.
Well, we have a motion for approval, I would just say that, two things. I don't think we would automatically extend area plans. If you have a unique situation like this one, requires a fifth or a sixth meeting, I don't think staff would be opposed to that, but for the most part, most of the area plans are getting accomplished in the time allowed. And as far as going back, the Sides Road DMZ is going to exist, there are three or four more meetings, I think, so I don't think that's going to be resolved. So, anyway, we have a motion for approval. All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Bryan, opposed. Okay, thank you. All right.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is the Further Discussion on Active Neighborhood Factors Deficiencies Report. And at your work session, we made a presentation, we're not planning on making another presentation. It was, you all, I wanted to continue it to give you a chance to read the report, so we're just here, if you've got any questions, or what we were hoping for is some notion that, for accepting the report, and then we're going to send it on to the city council for their information, since that was one of the city manager's key work items.
I know Mr. Bryan had some questions, and he sent Amy, and did she answer all of your satisfaction?
Ms. Crum did answer those, and my, and out of that, just a couple of comments. I appreciate the whole idea of looking at health and what we're doing with planning. The, I think we need to really push city council on priorities around activity centers, because as the conclusions in here show and whatnot, people are going to walk or move to something that's close to them, they're not going to go, you know, they're going to get in their cars and go to a Walmart because of lower prices, yeah, but they need the activity centers near us. We keep identifying these activity centers, I don't know that we can do too much, we just have to hope that developers come in there and provide the right kind of combination, but we can make them look attractive. I think that that's what we can do from a planning perspective. The other thing was, I took a look at the walkability score for my neighborhood, I don't agree with it at all, so I encourage that the public, when they look at those walkability scores, really look at those with some critique along the way. I live in a neighborhood that has three schools within walkability for kids, but yet it was ranked low in that, and I can't understand why that is. I think some of our neighborhoods are better than that score is showing, and we need to emphasize those things. And lastly, a point that I made in work session, we really need to emphasize with the county and the school administration, the, how their recreation areas and park areas can play such an important role in communities, and they need to be perfectly integrated into our neighborhoods and all of that. I appreciate the comments that are later on in that report about that, but I see it's something that we're going to have to continue to advocate for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what action would you like for us to take, Mr. Norby?
Kind of parallel to what you did with the other report, I think you had passed a motion to accept the report.
Is there a motion to accept the report? Motion from Mr. Bryan's, or second?
Second.
By Mr. Younger, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed, as unanimous. Thank you. All right. Okay, staff report.
Okay. At your work session, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a few things on there. One last report that we were supposed to do in our work program was performance standards for high-intensity uses. So that ought to be an interesting little discussion there. We will also be bringing you the draft 2017-2018 work program for you all to look, we won't expect you all to vote on it then, we'll just give it to you, explain it, and then let you all consider it for a couple of weeks to your July meeting.
Because you board members, that's good reading material if you're sleepy.
Yeah, there you go, yes. Appreciate you. Let's see. This is the time of year for my performance evaluation, so we'll need to go into closed session at the end of the meeting for that, for you to start on that. And the city attorney's office has reminded us that with all of our boards and commissions, we need to keep everybody up to date in terms of ethics training. So I probably need to get a sense of how many have been exposed to that from our city attorney's office in the past, and I want to make an opportunity for everyone who hasn't had that to be able to do that. We could bring Al Andrews in for our work session, if everybody wants a little refresher, or we could set up a separate time for folks on that, but just a heads up that we will need to kind of pursue that. And just for your information, the Winston overlay and the neighborhood meetings, UDO Amendment was approved on Monday night by city council, so that's in place, that'll be effective for our upcoming zoning deadline that's happening this Monday. And, let's see, I want to finally ask, I think right now we have Clarence, Alan, and Jason have requested to only get the electronic version of the agenda books, want to see if anybody else wants to go totally paperless on that. Okay, Chris, okay.
What I understand is that our new modifications aren't out there yet, Paul?
Well, yeah, we've had some discussion about that, and actually, for your meeting today, there were some changes made to put the tabs in there, does I understand it? Yeah.
Because I tried it earlier in the week, it did not work.
Right. And, but what our goal is going to be, is that when that book gets released the Friday of the, of the, before your meeting, that the tabs will be in there, so it'll be, help you navigate through there as you're doing that. That's our, that's our goal. It just, it didn't work that way this time, so, anyway.
Not ready to make the changes.
Yeah. And I think that is, oh, I want to mention one last thing, and that is that Michelle McCullough was a finalist for the City Service Excellence Awards under the customer service category. Unfortunately, she didn't, she was one of the two finalists, she did not get it there, but she has actually been nominated quite a few times, and so that's very much a compliment to her work, that so many people every year are recognizing her. However, I think, I may have mentioned this before, but she is receiving next week, at the Juneteenth luncheon at Old Salem, the Cedric Rodney Unity Award for Service to the Community. So that is, that's a very special award, and so we're really proud of her for that. So with that, that's staff report, so.
Thanks, sir. Any board members anything for the good of the order? Ms. Smith?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Very adjourned.